Tell us what we've accomplished this time because we see a lot of y'all.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. First of all, I want to say that we really appreciate the support that the county gives, the Shooting Sports in Walton County. A lot of counties don't get the support that you guys give us, and we really appreciate it. Walton County Shooting Sports had another great year. I'm going to start off talking about the air rifle team. That's what I coach. We went to the Daisy National Match. We had four shooters. Of those four athletes, we had one that medaled. I'm going to call them down. Mason Harper, Tyler Phelps, Willow Combs, Bethany Shirley. Bethany medaled in all four positions and got second place overall in the air rifle competition.
Hey, I am Jamie Gordia. I am the coach of the Walton County BB Team. We had another very successful year and had a second, seventh, and very respectable, I can't remember the exact number, placing at state. Our youngest team, we probably had our youngest crew ever come in this year, and they were in the top 30 in state as Team Three, so very impressive. Our Team One was second overall, just second to Pierce County, but that's okay this year. That was Caleb Phelps, Matty Glaze, Austin Davis, Morgan Abercrombie, and Skylar Everett. And then Madison Baines was actually our state champion. Out of 403 shooters, she was the state champion.
Please come forward.
At Nationals last year, we won. Now, the rule at Nationals is you cannot take the same team back the next year. You have to, you cannot shoot in concurrent years. It was very difficult to make the podium at Nationals two years in a row, and I am pleased to announce that Morgan Abercrombie, Caleb Phelps, Matty Glaze, Skylar Everett, and Megan Abercrombie were third in the nation. So they made the, Walton County has been on the podium two years in a row.
Very good.
Matty was a gold medalist in sitting. Austin was second overall in the alternates match with a second in kneeling. So, good job. And then I have, the rest of my crew came to thank y'all for your support. So if you were one of my shooters, come on up. So, we had some great youngsters this year.
Very good. The team has grown a lot since I coached BB.
We had 30 shooters this year.
Board, if y'all want to stand up behind them and get a shot, y'all are going to have to get a little closer together, even the wide-angle lens. There you go. We are very proud of all of y'all. Thank y'all. And not only thank these great team members, but I want to thank the parents for being involved with these activities, with these children, teach gun safety, whether you like guns or not. People do come in contact with them all the time, and gun safety should be taught at a very early age. Thank y'all, the BB Team. And if y'all want to leave and not have to listen to the rest of the stuff, which I see you do, please quietly. And it echoes up the hallway, so wait till you get outside before you really start cheering, please. And thanks again. DeeDee, we're going to give a few seconds for them to exit.
Okay.
I know you're ready to go, but, and you make some very valid points that we need to hear, and we will let the BB Team and their families. Thanks again. Okay, I think we're safe, DeeDee.
Thank you so much for letting me come and address y'all tonight. I'm DeeDee Harris. Hopefully, most of you know or remember me. I was here almost a year ago. That's why I'm back. I am the Executive Director of Walton Wellness, Inc., which is a nonprofit that has been around Walton County since about 2011. So we've been around, have lots of projects, and our projects focus on wellness. We also have mental health that come under our umbrella as well. So that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight, has to do with our mental health project. Walton Wellness is the coordinating organization for the Walton Justice Mental Health Task Force, and I came back tonight to kind of give y'all an update from the last time I was here. And I'm going to try to see if this is going to work. It's not advancing. I wonder why. Maybe? Ah, thank you. I was pressing the mouse, hoping it would click through. Patrice told me to click the mouse. Okay. So I was here about 10 months ago, November 1st, 2022. If y'all recall, you actually signed a resolution. The resolution stated that Walton County was dedicated to decriminalizing mental illness and to reduce the number of people in our Walton County jail with mental illness. And so the resolution is there that you signed, and so from November 1st, we just hit the ground running. We started in January 6th with our monthly meetings and have been meeting every month since then. Everyone that is sitting at the table is all of our criminal justice community. If you'll see, we have all of the first responder agencies represented to you, as far as fire, EMS, the sheriff's office, all the law enforcement organizations. And then we have other partners sitting with us, too. John Ward comes to our meetings every month, so y'all are represented there as well. And then also, we have a specific partner, which is Piedmont Walton, who lets us use their classroom for our meetings. And obviously, they are a part of our frontline system, so it's very important that they're sitting at the table with us, as well as Walton Empowers, which is another nonprofit here in Walton County that's dedicated to helping people with addictions. So they are a very important partner sitting at our table as well. So when we first got together with the task force, we came up with the mission, and our mission is basically decriminalize mental illness in Walton County and divert individuals from Walton's frontline emergency system. And if you'll see to the left, that is basically the overview of what we are considering Walton's emergency frontline system. And that's basically what the line of people with mental health issues go through, as far as who they come in contact with first, and then it kind of goes down the line from there. So our goals with the task force, there are several of them. One is optimize current resources, innovate strategy development, improve inter-agency communication, education, address the mental health needs of first responders, and develop outside partnerships and grants and funding. So the addressing needs of the mental health of first responders is actually something that kind of organically came about once we started meeting. That wasn't originally in our mind, our intent in forming the task force. However, after meeting, and this is what's so great about the task force, everybody coming together, we recognized that our first responders are drowning. This is a very difficult job if you take the mental health issues out of it, or the people that you're dealing with, the things that they're responding to day after day. And on top of that, often, most of our agencies are working at a deficit in labor. They all have, mostly have positions open. So people are having to work harder than what they normally would have to be working in this field. So the mental health of our first responders came out as something that we really needed to address and work on as well. So I put the presentation together just kind of going down the list of what our goals are and kind of showing y'all. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. Mental health issues, I think that probably everybody in this room either has been touched personally, has someone in their family, or knows someone who has had a mental health issue, touched their family. This is, and as our community grows, we're only going to have more mental health issues within our citizens. So first, optimize resources. The first thing that we did was there was not a standardized handout or list of resources or anything that all law enforcement had available to them. So often, whoever answered your call, it was kind of dependent on what they had in their head as to what they knew was available for a family to be able to take advantage of when it came to mental health resources. So if you're getting someone who's new to our community, someone who is new also to the police force or to a first responder organization, they might be a little bit lost on where to refer people. So one of the things we saw that would be very helpful is to have kind of a uniform approach for resources when one of our first responders goes to one of these calls. So we created this card, which we call the Crisis Card. It was created to actually be used in the immediacy of a crisis. It's not a list of resources that you just kind of give somebody and walk away. The idea behind the card is to give someone something immediately that they could take advantage of in that moment. Someone who's having a mental health crisis, or if that's someone that's caregiving for someone that's having a mental health crisis, in that moment, they don't have the brain power to really look at a list of resources, go through it. Also, a lot of resources might not be available in a crisis situation. So this card was developed with the idea of when a first responder, whether that be fire, EMS, or law enforcement, goes to a call where mental health issues are, why they're there, they have something that they can immediately give the person. And the, one of the keys behind this strategy is that the first responder try to get the person to make the call before they leave the residence. That is part of the training behind this card, that we try to encourage all first responders to get them to actually make the call, because that can make a huge difference on whether somebody takes advantage of these resources or not. Another way that we have reached the goal of innovative strategy is we created another card, which is called the 1096 Jail Diversion Guide. And the idea behind this is every law enforcement officer in Walton County now has one of these, or should have one of these, in their vehicle. The idea is to help an officer walk through options besides just bringing someone to jail or taking someone directly to our ER. So we have several questions along this card that an officer can kind of go through and ask himself. You know, what is the best option for this person? What is the best course of action? Obviously, there are times when someone has committed a crime. They may have mental health issues, but the best place for them is jail. Also, there are times when the best place for somebody to go is the hospital ER. But prior to having the Mental Health Task Force and creating other options, those were the only two places that people could go, and that was the only two options that first responders or definitely law enforcement had, to be able to remove someone from the residence that they were called to. So this is the Jail Diversion Guide, and it just goes through, like I said, a series of questions to help the officer walk through and figure out what the best course of action, if they can divert someone from entering the criminal justice system or divert them from our ER. On the back of that same card, another innovative strategy we put together is that the Georgia Legislature passed what they called the Mental Health Bill, which some of you may have heard of. I think this was in 2022. The Mental Health Bill was a huge piece of legislation. It had all kinds of different things in it, but one of the things that they put in the Mental Health Bill was called House Bill 1013. House Bill 1013 makes it legal for law enforcement to be able to involuntarily transport someone who is in a mental health crisis that may need an evaluation. They can involuntarily transport them to a center that can evaluate them. Now, when I say involuntarily, that means in the past, they would have to have an order, which is called a 1013 order, and they might have to have that in their hand in that moment. The 1013 House Bill allows that officer to be able to contact and talk with a licensed mental health professional that can give them verbal permission to bring that person in. And the person doesn't have to necessarily be willing to go. Now, I will say, talking to all of our law enforcement, when we first started talking about this, made everyone very nervous, and I think probably still makes everyone very nervous. And this is the problem with huge, sweeping pieces of legislation. A lot of times, the legislators, though they mean good, because the reason they developed this was because in the past, in order to get someone to an evaluation, an officer would have to have a reason, either a 1013 order, or he would have to, or she would have to put that person under arrest. To put the person under arrest, often, there were charges that were used against them that were very minor charges, let's say, false report of a crime or something. But yet, people were getting transported to jail for these types of charges, and it was because the officer had no other option for that. So the reason why the Georgia Legislature created this was they wanted to give officers options to not have to put someone into the criminal justice system if they don't have to be. So this, on the back of this card, actually walks the officer through all of the steps necessary to be able to utilize House Bill 1013. And in that, we have developed a very unique and special relationship with Advantage Mental Health. That is our state caregiver for mental health in, well, in the state of Georgia. And Advantage has a crisis walk-in clinic in Athens. The Crisis Walk-In Clinic is a place where you can go to be, have a mental health evaluation. And the great thing about this clinic is they have made it very easy for law enforcement to be able to utilize their services. They even have just kind of a portico that's specifically for law enforcement to be able to pull up and be able to walk the person directly in. They have a really quick form, that's kind of a handoff form, that they allow the officer to even be able to do digitally, if they can do it on the, before they get there or whatever. It just takes a phone call, which is what that card helps walk the officer through. Walton County is very lucky and fortunate, and this is because of our work through the task force that we have developed this unique relationship with Advantage. They do our House Bill 1013 consults, which means the officer can call them. They will then consult whether that person is fitting to be brought into the clinic. And they kind of piloted this program with Walton County. They also obviously work with Clark County. So Walton County and Clark County are the only two counties right now that get this kind of privilege working with Advantage. Improving inter-agency communication, just the very fact that everybody's getting together once a month, I think, is big. You'd have to ask these guys sitting out here how big that is. I think it is very helpful that they know they're going to touch base with one another and see one another. And the exciting thing is that every month, we have had representation from every agency in our community, including the cities, as well as the county. So I think that says a lot. From what I understand, in other places that have tried to put task force like this together, sometimes it's taken them up to two years just to get a first meeting together. So I really commend Walton County and our first responders and our law enforcement community. They are motivated. They want to work together, and they are solution-oriented. They want to figure out ways to make life better for everybody, not just themselves, but they are genuinely concerned about our citizens who need to get the proper care. So this was, we made history in March. We had the very first joint agency training that has ever happened. I'm very proud of that. So all of the organizations, all of our law enforcement organizations came together for a joint training to talk about these strategies, the different cards, and the relationship with Advantage. We, actually during that training, we went over to the clinic at Advantage, so the officers could see the facility and how they can drop somebody off or such. And this is Todd Brazwell, who comes, he's the ER Director at Piedmont Walton. And he, as well as Jody Carter, came, and also Cliff Howard from the DA's office. So we had everybody kind of involved in this training. They talked to the officers so that they would understand from each perspective how the mental, how a mental health crisis, or an individual with mental health crisis, coming into the criminal justice system, or from EMS's perspective, as well as from the ER perspective. So it was really good for them to see the whole picture, because we often just are narrowly focused in our piece of the pie. So it's nice to kind of view the whole pie, and that was our goal here. And all of, so these were training officers that came from each agencies that came together. We trained them on the strategies. They then took that presentation back to each agency and then trained the officers in that agency on. So everybody is uniform, and the idea is that everybody is kind of doing the same thing when it comes to what, a 1096 call, which is a mental health call. So the other thing, addressing the need, the mental health needs of first responders, we started a campaign, once we kind of realized that this was something that we needed to take on with the task force. And the campaign's kind of called "Don't Believe Everything You Think." We have these postcards in all of the first responder organizations, fire, EMS, law enforcement. And the QR code there scans to a, it's not a hotline, but it is a number that is provided through the Georgia Office of Public Safety Support. That is a new office in the state of Georgia that I think they came on about the time COVID did. So that's why most people have never heard of them. I found out about them. They came to our task force meeting, and they offer a lot of resources for first responders, specifically for mental health. They have free counseling with licensed professional counselors that resource, that first responders can take advantage of. They also just have a lot of different resources available to first responders, specifically around their mental health. So we created these cards. They are around at every agency. We also created these posters. We made them very specific for each agency, and so each one of the agencies had these posters hanging around as well, because obviously, in first responder community, people aren't always willing or want to go to someone and discuss their, maybe if they're struggling or having a problem. That's not something that a lot of us want to do, but especially in the first responder community, that's not always kosher. So we created these posters because we wanted a way for first responders to be able to contact the Office of Safety Support without having to ask for the number or even letting anybody know about it. It is anonymous when they call and talk to someone. They do not, they do not let the agency know or anything like that. So these are our posters that we've put around for our campaign. Last, our grants and funding. So it's very important that we collect data on all of the stuff that we do. So evaluation is built in, and they get sick of hearing me preach about evaluation, because it's the least fun thing to do, but obviously, the most important. As, there's lots of grants, there's lots of money out there that I think that we could utilize, but we need to make sure that we are addressing our most pertinent problems, and we are not going to know that until we can really evaluate and look at what's going on in the field. So this is just a small example of some of the data that we've collected on our specific strategies. So we're evaluating those strategies. We want to know, is it working? Is it worth your time? How can we tweak it? We also are always evaluating the relationship and the partnership with Advantage, because they're sitting at the table with us, and that has been extremely helpful, because if a little glitch in whatever comes up, we're able to address that immediately and able to talk through it, which has become very helpful. So I do want to introduce just very briefly Tammy Conlin from Advantage Behavioral Health. She just wants to come up and say a few words about the task force.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I'm here because I am in full support of this partnership. The task force has proven to be a very valuable resource for Walton County. I serve as the CEO for Advantage Behavioral Health Systems, which covers 10 counties in northeast Georgia, but I'm also a Walton County resident. So I shared with DeeDee a while back, like, this is very personal to me, because I live in Walton County, and the need for this partnership has been long overdue. So I'm really appreciative that y'all support this. I, you have some data that, do I just push the arrow? Is it on there?
Yeah, it might not be on this one.
Okay.
In the box that you have in front of you, I gave you a hard copy of my presentation, and in that hard copy is the sheet that she's referring to.
Yeah. So just to quickly connect the dots here, you know, in Walton County, in the last year, we served 1,192 Walton County clients. At our Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which is what is called a emergency receiving facility that's designated by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. That means law enforcement can bring individuals, transport them on a 1013, or through consulting with us through House Bill 1013. They can bring them to our crisis center. They don't have to wait around and see what we're going to do. They can just leave them there in our hands, and then we take it from there. We do an evaluation. If they have private insurance, we may have to refer them somewhere else, but law enforcement gets to go back and do what they do best, is be taking care of the community. So we served 78 total clients from Walton County in the past year through August 30th of this year, and 6.5% of them, of all the clients result, of our BHCC, were Walton County residents. I did kind of give you some information about the non-crisis services that we provide for the Walton County residents, as well as what are some of the diagnosis for mental health and substance use disorders, that kind of the top five. And just one last point is 62% of the clients have both a mental health disorder and a substance use disorder. So again, I'm very excited about this opportunity to serve on the task force and to be at the table with everyone. It has been a very solution-host experience for me, and the opportunity, like DeeDee said, when there's glitches, we just talk them through, and everyone is very supportive of everybody's role. And I think the data shows that it's been very successful so far. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say, moving forward, we definitely need the support of this body. This is, as mentioned, you know, this is something that has affected most citizens of Walton County. I know everyone sitting in this room. So we definitely will need your continued engagement and support in what we're doing, especially as we work, John and I hope to work to be able to find some funding to bring in as well. And right now, Walton Wellness is fitting the bill for our breakfast, because we do get get together and have breakfast every morning, and for all of the cards and stuff. And that funding comes from the Walton County Healthcare Foundation. So the Walton County Healthcare Foundation is definitely helping to support this, and hopefully will continue to help support this as well. Any questions or anything about?
I've got just a thing or two to say, and I wanted to thank you for all of your dedication and hard work on this, because it's really making a difference. We've got a lot to do, and we, but we've accomplished so-
John, please speak in the speaker.
We've accomplished so much in such a short time. And it's such an issue that we're ahead of in so many ways. Just yesterday, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia sent out a resolution requesting each county to consider adoption of the resolution, bringing the attention to the Georgia Legislature for the next session. And we've already been contacted by several communities who are wanting to not recreate the will, but look at what we've done here. So I think that because of your hard work, Walton County is helping address this issue.
Yeah, that was awesome. Thank you, Tom. I too just want to reiterate, my last point is that the group that is represented here tonight, which is just a representation of the task force, again, they're very committed, and it comes from the top, that they are kind of mentoring these young officers coming in and stuff, but showing them how to work together, how to communicate, and let's not turf guard in all of our old kind of ways that we used to do. So this is very beneficial in coming together and, and working through things and talking through things. Thank you. I know y'all have things to do, so thank you for letting-
Thank you, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I do see a lot of people representing this task force. Would all y'all please stand up and be recognized?
Appreciate what I'll do.
I would, I would also like to thank you guys, and Sheriff Chapman has educated me on the mental health problem within our jail system. We're also a mental hospital. And this, if it takes that stress, or some of that stress, off our jail system and the Sheriff's Department, it saves taxpayers multiple dollars. So kudos to the good work. I think you're setting an example for other communities, and it's only getting worse. We all see it. So I didn't know that 60% had both substance abuse and a mental problem in your facility. That's, that's a bad combination. Thank y'all very much. And if y'all would like to leave before we start the regular meeting, don't want to sit through that, you are welcome to do that, except for the sheriff. He needs to stay around. All right. Thank you, Joe. After they leave, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for all the wonderful people we have in Walton County, the task force and all the good work that they do. Thank you for all of our employees that work for the county. They do a great job, and please watch over them and their families. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions for the county and help us to make the best ones. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'm going to call our meeting to order and roll call. Did I hear somebody's? Maybe that was. Roll call, please show that everyone is present, all six commissioners, county manager, and chairman. All right, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. We'll go straight to planning commission, which is, Sharna.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. The first case is LU 23060022, and then zoning Z 23060021. This is to change the land use from Village Center to Highway Corridor, and rezone 2.79 acres from B2 to B3 for major auto repair, as well as a variance to allow this facility to be adjacent to a residential district. The applicant is Mitchell Construction, Inc. Owner is Robert and Catherine Von Etter. The property is located at 37, 38, 37 Malachi Way and Highway 81 in Youth Monroe. This is in District 3, and as I said, they want to change the land use from Village Center. They want to rezone the property. Andrea Gray was the attorney that represented this at the planning commission. There were a few residents from the adjoining subdivision that were opposed. Their main concerns were noise and traffic, and what all would be allowed in a B3 zoning. The planning commission recommended approval with several conditions that you all should have a copy of, or I'll be glad to read them.
Read them right quick.
All right, so the first one is provide a 50-foot heavily wooded buffer, a 6-foot wooden privacy fence, and then another 50-foot of grass landscaped area between the fence and the paved areas, and a 200-foot buffer along Malachi Way. Number two, the only entrance for the shop would be off Highway 81. Number three, all automotive repair work would be conducted inside the building. Number four, all the cars being repaired will be inside the building while being repaired and when the business is closed on nights and weekends. Number five, electric tools will be used instead of air tools to the greatest extent possible. Number six, hours of operation are limited to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That was the recommendation.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this application, and we always start with the applicant, please.
Well, good evening, Board. It's nice to see you this evening. As you know, I'm Andrea Gray, and I'm presenting tonight on behalf of Mitchell Construction in their request for an automotive repair facility on 2.79 acres. With that, we're requesting, as Ms. Sharna pointed out, a change in zoning from B2 to B3, a change in the character area from Village Center to Highway Corridor, and a variance to allow for the location next to a residential district. And as you can see here, the property is located, it actually fronts on three different roads, Highway 81, Youth Jersey Road, and Malachi Way. It is currently zone B2, which allows for many commercial uses, and it's adjacent to other properties that are also designated for commercial uses. The proposed uses for, for this automotive repair shop, which was previously located in Loganville, it's Victory Motorsports, and they primarily do engine and transmission repair, clutch work, performance upgrades, electrical work, tune-ups. They are not a quick lube, they're not a quick tire shop, they won't be doing any paint or any body work. Here's a copy of the site plan, which I handed out to you. This site, site plan has been slightly modified from the one that was presented at the planning commission meeting. Originally, we had the entrance off of Highway 81, but we were unable to get an easement and writing from the neighbor to be able to do that. And so the entrance has been moved on this site plan to Youth Jersey Road. We purposely continue to keep it off of Malachi Way, because that is the entrance to the residential area behind the development. And so we've made an effort there to make it a safe entrance for the commercial use. We've also included a deceleration lane there, close to coming off of Malachi Way and going into the development. The building itself will be about 7,800 square feet, with 1,500 square feet of office and 6,300 square feet of the actual shop. We've got 17 parking spaces for employees and for customers. As Ms. Sharna mentioned, we are proposing a 6-foot wooden fence with a 50-foot buffer between the adjoining property line and the fence. And then there's an additional 100 feet, for a total of 100 feet, between the property line and the actual disturbed area where the pavement will be located. And again, there's a 200, at least 200 feet between where we're proposing to disturb the property in Malachi Way. You'll note that there's a lot of property left over from what we're developing. My client is not proposing to subdivide the lot, they're not proposing to do any additional development. This, as shown here in the site plan, is what they're asking for approval for and what they're proposing to do. Here are renderings of what the building will look like. There's bay doors on three sides of the building, a nice glass front entryway, and glass windows in the shop area. The building will be insulated so that noises coming from the auto repairs happening inside will be minimized to the greatest extent possible. It'll have to be ventilated to accommodate that, because of the work that will be going on inside of the building. And here's a photo representation of what the building would look like. To mitigate for any impacts to the surrounding properties, all the conditions that the planning commission approved, those were proposed by us. We are willing to live by those, except for the change in the entrance location. But again, all the work will occur inside of the building, again, insulated, ventilated building. Working hours are limited to Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. As I showed on the site plan, there's 50 feet between the property line and a 6-foot wooden fence, and then there's another 50 feet between the fence and the actual area of disturbance for the development. There's 200 feet between the development and Malachi Way. And again, the entrance is off of Youth Jersey, and electric tools will be used to the greatest extent possible. And again, all cars being repaired will be inside the building, both when they're being repaired and then when the business is closed. Here's a representation of the, the actual distance between the most, the closest homes in the actual center of operations. And so it's a little hard to see on this from where you're sitting, but there's, the closest house is 375 feet from the center of our operations to the house. And for my reference, I had to look up what that equates to, and a football field is 360 feet. So it's greater than a whole football field between our operations and these adjoining properties. And you can see on this aerial view, there's existing hardwood trees on the buffer, and those will stay. And then again, the 6-foot wooden privacy fence will be added. We're requesting a variance because of a provision in your ordinance that deems any kind of engine or transmission work as a major repair, as opposed to a minor repair. And so that requires a variance to allow this to be located here as proposed. The transmission and engine work is really the meat of what my client does, and so it would be a tremendous hardship not to be able to do that type of work. This is really, this is their business. And given that the work will be conducted inside, there'll be insulated walls, we have all the buffers, any, you know, impacts to the residential area will be mitigated based on those things we're proposing to do. Character area change, again, we're asking for a change from Village Center to Highway Corridor, which honestly makes a lot more sense, given, given the location on Highway 81 and being adjacent to other commercial buildings, and then across the street from Youth Middle School. And so again, this is just a summary of our request, again, for the rezoning B2 to B3, change in character area, Village Center to Highway Corridor, and a variance from Article 6, Part 1 of your ordinance for the location. Again, we're happy with all the conditions imposed by the planning commission, with the exception of the entrance. Again, we had to move that to Youth Jersey Road, because we weren't able to get an easement through the neighboring property to 81. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do the board members have any questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in support of this application, like to make a statement? Okay. Those in opposition to this application, please come forward, and once one issue is cited, let's, don't be repetitious, we get the issues, try not to repeat the same thing over and over, but please take your turns and come up. This is time to let us know your opposition to it. You're elected.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't bring one for each one of these people. Here's a letter from everyone that is in oppose, that's the entire subdivision. Here's a directory of the subdivision.
Okay.
So everybody's opposed.
I will give it to the clerk. And start off by your name and address, please.
My name's John Sowers, and I live at 3778 Malachi Way, which is the same address that I think the young lady used over there. So the address is on a residential street. Just want to point that out. I met with Mr. Mitchell, and we had a great conversation. I wanted to understand what he was doing. It's probably been a couple of months ago, wasn't it, at least? And we didn't, we're not at variance or anything. I told him about my background, I wanted to know a little bit about him. And I said, "Well, I'm a shop rat. I grew up in the automotive business. At eight years of age, I was getting a nickel a car about 1952 to vacuum them out, the first car wash in St. Pete. And my dad built a lubatorium, and he built a body shop, and he kept on going." And so I understand, and I've ran those things up through the age of about 27, when I shifted into and began to get involved in real estate, came up to Atlanta, and then ultimately started to develop properties up here. So I understand exactly what he's doing, and I love shops. I know about real estate, I've gone and done the rezoning and all that stuff, so I think I'm really qualified on both ends of this stick. So when I just look at it objectively, and I appreciate that science you had up there. If they're not going to be able to, you know, you got access is one thing to begin with. I don't know if there's going to have access through the current access on 81 to the floor covering and the other. Is that true, sir?
That's my understanding.
That's your understanding? I don't know if Mr. Myers is here or not. Is he here, Clay? Clay, you want to address that? Is that okay for him? I mean, it's his-
The proposal they just handed us shows the access off Youth Jersey-
Right. Exactly, I saw that. And so that's where they're going to go. That's, so next, then you have the development. It was Von Etter developed this. He was my next door neighbor until he finally sold his surveying company and moved to North Carolina. He had a vision, and so he went ahead and developed that and called that strip Village Center. He wanted to see it developed out to where you could have exactly what you have in there now. You got a floor covering, you got a salon, you got a real estate guy, you got a, you know, an appliance repair company, and it goes on and on. And you can put any of those, anybody seen any of these little strip centers? You go down to 81, they got a bakery there, they got a pizza place there. So the idea, this is the kind of development that it was going to be, and it's called Village Center. Now, when you go into a, what they refer to as major auto repair center, they're all built on basically a main artery, and they're not built on residential arteries. They're never put at the front of a subdivision. If you measure from the two monuments that basically say Malachi Co. to the front, it's about 100 feet. And if it is developed as B3, well, the whole, is the whole property B3? Commissioner Sheldon said, "Well, no, we don't have to, maybe we'd zone that B3 and leave that B2." Is that true, sir?
I guess we could.
Okay. Well, what happens then? So all of a sudden, you got a B3 going on, you're not going to have any more B2. It's totally changed the entire neighborhood. It's totally changed the entire neighborhood. If you go down to, through, you take 81, headed into town, you go through the traffic light there at Center Hill Church, you continue on, we have the old cotton mill there, right? And I turned that into an auto garage. You continue on a little farther, and then you've got another major development on the front, all residential, light, commercial. They have a big drive going down, and they've got four or five acres of all the kind of businesses that he wants. They got auto repair, they got concrete people down there, they got big electrical repair people. And so that is what we would end up is, on this little thing, all of a sudden, we go from a residential, light, commercial, retail, to basically anything. Once it gets zoned, we have no recourse. If it's B3, all they're going to do is stamp it, and they'll put what they want in. What's it going to be next? A machine shop? Is it going to be some kind of small manufacturing outfit? And it's right there at our entrance, literally dead on it. So when you go through and you look, just logic, common sense, how many people have seen this KIFA operation, write it fundamentally, the entrance to a residential subdivision? You don't have them. They don't allow them. So Vonider knew what he wanted. He wanted to have this, what you call Village Center. And so we say, "We're all for it. Whatever, whatever they're allowed to build on a B2, we're not going to fight it. It's zoned. We're satisfied." But this will totally change the entire nature of that sub, that particular interchange as well as the continued development. B3 mains, the rest of it's B3. Because they'll come in and say, "Well, he's got B3." We have no recourse. All we want to do is say, "Guys, here it is. Here's the zoning. Let it continue." And youth will continue to develop that little area. There will be people that come in there, and they'll build buildings and this and that. Some of them might want, you know, build a building for themselves, for their own business. So in effect, that's it. If it's rezoned, the rest of it's B3. That's a higher-grade commercial. That isn't basically retail-type of commercial stuff. And it's right at our door. Bang. You don't see that anywhere in town. You take residence entrances, and you push stuff away from them. So basically, that's it. It's simple.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who is next? He covered just about all the objections very well. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, please? Okay, I'll give the applicant a chance for rebuttal.
Go back to my site plan here. All right, there we go. Well, I appreciate Mr. Sowers' comments. I think you did do a great job of summarizing in a very calm manner, which is always appreciated from citizen comments. I know it can be difficult when properties are transitioning, but here, let's remember that this is already a B2-zoned, commercial property. As zoned, it could be a gas station, it could be a Bulldog Tire, it could be a Jiffy Lube, it could be a business that generates three times more traffic and noise and lighting than what my client is proposing. The only reason we're having to jump to B3 is because of a caveat in the ordinance about doing engine work, which seems somewhat arbitrary to me, given that it is an auto repair shop and the work will be done inside the building. My client has also taken significant measures to address the concerns that were expressed with regard to these large buffers. We purposely stayed off of Malachi Way. Honestly, as zoned, and as zoned, and as, as the site is designed right now, it does have entrances off Malachi Way. So again, gas station, quick lube, any of those businesses could come in here and immediately put that driveway on Malachi because there's already an existing curb cut there. We're not going to do that. We're going to move the drive to Youth Jersey Road and create those additional buffers. My client is not proposing a lot of different B3 uses. This is what they want to build. They want to do this auto repair center, and they have no intention of developing any more than what is shown on this drawing here. They could have subdivided it probably at least two or three times and put two or three different commercial businesses on it as zoned. And again, with regard to the array of services offered in the village-type feel, this auto repair center will help round out the uses that are available in the adjacent strip mall. So again, I think that the measures my client is proposing to mitigate for those concerns are adequate. And again, let's do remember that this is already a commercial piece of property, and the uses that could go here without a rezoning could be significantly more of a detriment to the neighborhood than what we're proposing here. But with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Do you, board, have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I do have one for Sean.
All right.
Do you? Is there any B3s up 81 in that area?
2.79 acres. So these properties right here are I-1, which is manufacturing. There's B3 right here on the other side of Brookview Drive. And then B3, B1, B1, B2. So there's, there's several along this. And like I said, this is I-1 right here, which is even a heavier.
And this one's on B2 now?
Correct.
And could a gas station go on that corner?
Yes, sir.
What can be in I-1?
Let me change my question. Could a convenience store gas station go on that corner?
Yes, sir. So, you know, if the board chose, because of the concern about the other uses, this could be rezoned to B3 for this use only.
Specific use.
In that way, yes. In that way, if the property owner wanted to do something different, they would have to come back to this board to get that approved.
Okay.
And it would be just for this body repair. I mean, auto.
Any further questions from the board? Does the opposition want to rebut anything that was said? Please, I want to give everybody.
When Mr. Mitchell and I met, he said that he was not going to use all the property, and he would eventually sell part of it off. Now, is it my understanding you're not going to sell any of it off? So then you can make all that grass area, you could do something real nice, almost make a park there.
Well, you could, you could request us to put specific, just for this purpose only, and not be subdivided if the board chose to do that for this particular zone here.
But keep in mind, when that goes in, there'll never be.
I understand this board, this board won't be here in 10 years.
Yeah.
I understand that. But we can tie it to a specific use, specific purpose, and it not be subdivided. I just, personally, I'd hate to see another convenience store go on that corner.
A what?
A convenience store.
They'll never put one in there. Be the reason why the traffic is going to be crazy.
The traffic is awful there.
Yeah, but wait, and if you take from that particular fork and go back, it's all residential, both sides of the road, all the way to 138.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, if you want to change it, it'll change the entire.
I was just asking a question. I'm not making any recommendations.
Oh, no, no.
Just asking a question.
But, so, that's it. It's, if it gets changed, is he going to be able to sell the property or not? Because that's what it was represented, and I probably will sell it. I don't blame him. I would too. Because what he was saying, he was going to pay for it, and I'm not going to mention that, that's private.
That's none of our business.
That's not, and that's why I'm not saying it. I would want to sell off any remaining property also.
Yes, sir.
You follow me?
Understand you.
And then you have people about, the kids that come out of school. There's no way now, there's a lot of kids walking back all the way down that street there. But I cut a grass stop for them so they can actually walk. It's up there. Well, that's not the picture there, but I could see it.
That's okay, but let's stick to this, this light, and we understand. We understand the petition, the objection, and your point.
Okay.
So we do need to move a little faster.
All right. So basically, then, you're either going to rezonate and what, restrict that, nothing else is going to be.
I don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
It'll be a recommendation made by your commissioner in that district.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I am going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve this with the specifics of this building only. If any other building is built, it has to come back before the board.
And just for this.
And also the stipulations with the Planning Commission.
So it would be this building and this use.
That's right.
Only. And all the stipulations except for the entrance off of 81.
That's right.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. We have a second, Commissioner Warren. Any further discussion? Before I call the vote, are there going to be any restriction on subdividing the property?
Uh, yes. Well, I think that, you know, just the restriction that it be for this use only would suffice for that, you know, but.
If you don't want further subdivision.
It wouldn't hurt to specify.
Yeah, add that to it.
Okay.
Amended, second still stands?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain. We had four. Show the hands in favor. One, two, three, four, five. And one opposed and one abstention. So it passed, but it's restricted to this use only and can't be subdivided. All right, let's move on to the next case, please.
4.2 is approval of land use 23060026 and rezoned Z 23060025. This is a land use change from Village Center to Highway Corridor and a rezon of 0.23 of each driveway on parcels C8, parcel 8, and parcel 9 to B2 to allow access. I just, this is in District 2, the applicant's Kingdom Storage. The owner is Linda Linkus. Just wanted to kind of explain what this is. This property, this B2 property here, was rezoned a few years ago for storage. At that time, they could not get an entrance from GDOT off of the highway. They came in, and these two properties were approved as black lots, residential. So what they're trying to do is just rezone the portion of these two lots to provide access to this B2. So all they're doing is just taking 0.23 of this right here to provide.
Do they own those two parcels?
I'm sorry?
Do they own those?
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes. At the Planning Commission, there was no opposition, and it was recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this par, application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Brian Linkus. My wife Linda and I live at 1409 Monroe Drive in Monroe. And, you know, quitters never win. And this has been a three-year running. We, Linda graciously gave up the two acres for the purpose of a storage rebuilding, which we got rezoned three years ago. And we tried to work with both landowners, but they were just not willing to work with us. And so the DOT has said that if we meet the conditions of the county to, and the county is requesting that we rezon, it's actually 0.23 plus 0.2. So it's, yeah. So it's, it's a segment of each driveway, all right, that is adjacent to the two-acre tract.
Gives you the frontage you need.
It gives us the frontage with DOT, and they're going to give us unrestricted access as far as, you know, we don't have to go right turn in, right turn out, we can go either way. And this will grant us the access that is needed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you all very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board what their recommendation is.
Ms. Chairman, when this process was started, Brian and I both had hair, so that's how long it's been. But we finally got everything worked out, and I make a motion that this be approved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, gentlemen, you have the administrative consent agenda before you. Any questions? If there aren't any, entertain a motion that we approve the initiated administrative consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we have two project length budget amendments.
It's good to, good to see everybody. The budget amendment, project length I have is the resurfacing of some neighborhoods, is my understanding, that we're not.
No, that's further down.
The first one I have is resurfacing Project Splotch.
Is that the right one?
Yeah, you're right.
My understanding was there were some subdivisions that were, that need to be finished or resurface the streets and the subdivisions, and that's the first project length budget. You want me to, do you?
Let's, let's adopt both of them at the same time if no one has any objections.
We use Splotch funds.
We're going to use Splotch funds for those resurfacing projects. And amount of how much?
Was it 90?
Was it 930,000?
These two are Beagle Run, 0.31 miles at 46,500, and Stewart Lake Road at 0.75 miles of 112,500 for a total of 159.
159, this is different from the second topic. Right, okay. All right, entertain a motion to approve the first resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Resolution 62, budget amendments.
You should have a summary in front of it.
We do.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Let's not entertain a motion to approve the.
To approve.
Got a motion to approve? Got a second? All those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. I think Morris had something to do, but we, I'll cover the rejection of the bid for Center Hill Church road line replacement. The bid was way over budget and the water department's recommending not accepting, rejecting the bid and rebid at a later date. And I'll make that a motion to reject that bid.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Finally, human resources and the reinstatement of vacation buyback. John, you want briefly?
Yeah, I'll cover that and then ask if we have anything Melissa can help me with it. In 2019, vacation buyback policy was reinstated, but it never happened. So what we're looking at is we have multiple employees who've reached the max of 344 or some who are going to be reaching that max this year. The majority of those are involved in public safety. Out of 311 that are eligible, 212 are public safety or just almost 70%. What that is, is in the Sheriff's Department, where we've had unfilled positions and people are called back in for overtime in the jail or on patrol, EMS, fire, and there is some others throughout the other departments, but the overwhelming majority are in public safety. And with looking at that, those people who are coming back in to help keep operations going and to keep emergency response going, they're being penalized by not being able to use their vacation. This is a way for them to be made whole in that entire process. And tonight, we're recommending that we move ahead and fund the vacation buyback program that has already been reinstated with the commission's blessing. And the nice thing about that is we carry it as a liability. It's already budgeted, it's already in the adopted budget. We're just bringing it to your attention to reinstate it.
We're bringing it forward to start paying it out. It was suspended by the previous chairman when COVID and other stresses on the county budget. We have been budgeting it. This is about $690,000, but the employees have earned it. It's part of our policy and it's been budgeted. And I make a motion that it's reinstated.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Appointments, under the appointments, the Walton County Hospital Authority has been recommended by the authority to reappoint Angela Yaman?
Yarmann.
Yarmann, excuse me. I didn't see the R. Ellen DeValle, and to appoint Dr. Richard Jacob to replace Dr. Bynum, who moved from Walton County. And I'll make that in form of a motion.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. County manager's update.
We're going to be quick on this. Just want to congratulate Finance Department and specifically Jennifer Wall. She has a long history of service to Walton County and she's been selected to assist Milton and be the Assistant Finance Director. Public Works was awarded the Georgia Chapter of the APWA Project of the Year Award at the 2023 conference this year. And Cody Howington, who came before the board, placed eighth in the nation at the Public Works National Conference in San Diego in the mini excavator competition. Clegg and Pleasant Valley have been resurfaced. Clover Drive has been resurfaced for the city of social circle in our service delivery agreement. And I just wanted to thanks to everyone in Public Works and all of the different departments for our response on August 28th, when we had over eight inches in about four hours. And I'm actually extra thankful for being able to use PJ East Road again. And September 23rd, paper shred event through the recycling department, and on October 21st, Rivers Live River Cleanup. And in animal control, just wanted to let you know that we've started sharing adoptable pets on the county's Facebook page again to get extra attention to assist in reaching out to people to adopt animals. With that, that's the update, but I do have two additional items that are next. The first is EMS ambulance surplus. We have a request that I'm making a recommendation that we should take one of our retired ambulances and instead of surplusing and putting it on the auction block, we're going to be working with Fish, providing that retired ambulance to Fish once it's surplus. And they have coordinated with local physicians to provide some services to individuals that they're assisting throughout the county, that they're helping find housing for and who, people who are shut-ins. And this was a great way of, believe, moving forward, taking some pressure off our own ambulance services. It takes pressures off of being further supported by taxpayer dollars or providing that service. And a lot of times, those individuals are being transported for non-emergency service to the emergency room at Piedmont-Walton. So this seemed like a joint project. Ms. Little with Fish, I've met with her, I've also met with Ronnie in EMS and with the new president of the Piedmont Hospital, and all are in agreement that this would be an assistance from the county to take some pressure off both EMS and Piedmont-Walton
Okay, we'll need a motion to do that with this. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, John?
All right, the next one, and this was the one that may have been a little confusing because the earlier one was for resurfacing of subdivision losing Splotch, but this one is an ongoing issue dating back to almost 2008 during the housing crash and beyond. We have about 10 subdivisions across the county that have not received their final coat. Some of those limited funds were collected in the form of a bond at the end of some of those transitioning properties, but overwhelming majority, the banks didn't pay back on the bonds. So we've got these 10 subdivisions. There are Crestview, Ayers Walk, Windridge, Rose Creek, Wood Lake, Wood Lake 48, Zax Creek, Poppy Field, Sandy Creek Cove, and Sterling Oaks Phase 1. These are all, they have their base coat on, but they don't have their final coat on. And in order to bring those back up to meet county standards and to move forward, we're recommending to allocate funding to resurface those.
And that amount is how much, John?
933,786. It's a big-ticket item, but it is essential. And on top of that, the county's done a great job at increasing the reserve fund, and I think this is a worthy project for that.
I move we approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimous. We have no one signed up for public comment. Does anyone have any announcements to make?
I do believe that you've got at your desk a petition bringing to your attention needed roadwork on Camp Lane.
Yes.
To Public Works, that's been added in. There'll be deep patching completed, and then it will be on the next resurfacing project list.
For those that didn't hear, that is a small subdivision called Camp Lane that put forth a petition, and Public Works has agreed to move it up in the paving schedule. And deep patching will occur this fall, and they'll get it on the list to be paved next year. Okay? Any other announcements? We have no executive session tonight. Entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Very good. The winghead towards our circle. My knees.